Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District is now convened in a committee of the whole meeting on Monday, March 4th, 2013, in the boardroom of Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District Instructional Support Center, 10,300 Jones Road, Houston, Texas, at 6:00 PM for the purpose of reviewing that portion of the March 7th, 2013, school board agenda designated as action items, and to hear designated reports and recognitions posted in the meeting notice as required by Texas law. No action will be taken at this meeting. I want to welcome the members of our audience and our television viewers to this meeting of the Board of Trustees. As a Cypress Fairbanks Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. It is not the role of the Board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees, not a meeting of the public. Prior to this meeting, Board members received information related to items on tonight's agenda. Agenda items will not necessarily be handled in the order listed on the notice. The meeting is open to all who wish to attend and hear the matters discussed. During the course of this meeting, the Board may determine that a closed session is necessary. In that event, the Board will meet in closed session to consider matters duly posted for this meeting as permitted by Section 551.071 to 551.084 inclusive of the Texas Government These proceedings are airing live on CFTV Channel 16 and CFTV online on the district website. They will also be rebroadcast throughout the month on Channel 16 and available as video on demand on the website. For the tape to adequately reflect the proceedings, I respectfully ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking and that cell phones are turned off or in silent mode. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening and for your interest in Cypress Fairbanks Independent School District. The listed reports tonight that the Board will hear are 4A, the administration will provide an oral report on Human Resources and Student Services Department. This will be presented on Thursday evening. The administration will provide an oral report on the 83rd Legislative Session. Majority of what will be presented on Thursday evening, but Mrs. Hall is going to talk to us just a little bit tonight, right, Ms. Hall?
Yes, we will be providing the report with the latest update on the current legislative session, but I would like to recommend that we post an addendum for Thursday night's meeting that would allow the Board as a group to identify proposed legislation that you would like to send correspondence to legislators, either in support or expression of concerns for that proposed legislation. And we can do that on a monthly basis. It could be months, even though we post that, you determine and you make a decision as a group that, you know, there's not any legislation at this time that we feel the need to express any concerns about or support of, but we can just make that a standard agenda item each month so after the update you can make a decision about that, whether or not you would like to send some.
Okay, well, I think there's definitely some items that we want to discuss and possibly take a board action on, which we will not be able to do Thursday night, but we would be able to do the addendum, right, Marty? And be able to discuss it in the open meeting?
If you do the addendum tomorrow, you would be able to do that on Thursday following the discussion out.
Okay.
That's what Teresa's saying. Absent the addendum, we wouldn't be able to do so.
Is anybody having a problem with making that addendum to the meeting? Is that okay down on this end? Okay, well, we'll just plan on doing that, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. C, the administration will provide a written report on the district's participation in purchasing cooperatives for our 2011 through 2012 school year. Presenter is Matt Morgan. It's questions only. There is no presentation. Do we have any questions from Board members? Anyone? Nope. Anybody want to see Matt? Just stand up and walk up to the mic? We're okay with that? Okay. The administration will provide a written report on the 2013 summer school plans for elementary, middle school, and high school. Again, no presentation, just questions only. Anyone have any questions on that? Mr. Jackson?
When I compared this to last year, it looked like we might have some minor changes. What would those changes happen to be?
We'll let Mary come up and visit. Good evening. You are correct, Mr. Jackson. There are some minor changes. A couple of things. In the middle school environment, the Student Success Initiative comes back this year. That is that eighth graders... Oh, you're glad for that. Well, I'm glad too. That is that eighth graders, in order to promote to ninth grade, must pass their reading and math star test. They have three opportunities with which to do that, the third being in the summer. So, we have some preparation opportunities, some support for students in that environment, and we have that happening at three campuses. Two main summer school campuses, which are... Excuse me, I'm wrong about that. Two main summer school campuses for regular makeup credit and original credit options, and two SSI sites for support of the students taking their third administration retest. And then in the high school environment, we have five high school campuses involved, a little bit different than was last year. We have two campuses for original credit opportunities, nine through 12. We have, at those campuses, we also have makeup credit for 11th and 12th graders. And then we have three satellite campuses that will take care of EOC retesting for ninth and 10th graders, and all of their makeup credit courses will be there during the summer. And those freshmen, different from... Freshmen and sophomores, different from the 11th and 12th graders, will have an opportunity to reclaim or make up three half credits in that 30-day window. Additionally, different from last summer is that summer school will be on a four-day work week, Monday through Thursday, as the rest of our facilities are different than last summer.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Jackson? I'm sorry. I just wanted to also add that fifth grade is also an SSI summer school as well this year, and we will be at five locations, Danish, Durie, Franco Le, and McPhee. Same reason that Mary gave for the eighth grade.
And forgive me, I forget that I have to talk about elementary.
Thank you very much. All recognitions will be presented on Thursday evening. Action items, the Board will now review and discuss the following action items. 5A, the Board will consider awarding bids and contracts and are authorizing purchase orders for the following items. Athletic and clinic first aid supplies, basic life, AD and D supplemental life and dependent supplemental life insurance, data and telephone system equipment and supplies, renewal year two of three, electronic and technology equipment, repair parts and repair service, handheld and two-way mobile radios, batteries and repair, janitorial supplies, lamps, renewal year two of three, library books, publications, and media supplies, property insurance, vocational lab supplies, equipment, and housewares. Do we have any questions on this? Anyone? Mr. Jackson?
Just a very quick question. On insurance, would you explain the process that we went through on obtaining bids and evaluating those bids for the insurance, please?
Which one of the insurances you're talking about? The property insurance or the life insurance?
Well, actually, both of them, please.
Okay. The district went out and did a request for proposal in both situations. With the life insurance, we did a request for proposal, and that was sent out by a broker of record. And we received back that information, and then the broker of record helped us... assisted us in looking at those proposals. And then the district committee actually looked at it and actually made the decision on which one to go with. In the situation with the life insurance, the district is going to be able to offer more basic life insurance to every employee. It's going up from $15,000 per employee to $30,000 per employee with a minimal increase in cost. And we also asked that them to, when they were doing the request for proposal, we don't currently have life insurance for our dependents, so that is something that our employees have been asking for. And so, I think that is very good because we... they can now buy life insurance up to $10,000 for dependent children, and they can buy life insurance for their spouse. In addition, the guaranteed issue, the first year, went up. It's currently $85,000, and it went up to $250,000 for new employees or employees that currently have life insurance. It's $185,000 if a person has not selected life insurance in the past, but they're currently an employee. And then on the property insurance, we actually brought to the Board, we did an RFP for broker of record, and then after that, then we did a request for proposal on the property insurance. And the same process is when the property insurance information came in, then that was reviewed by the firm... I mean, by our broker of record, and we looked at that information. Now, this one's a little bit different because of the timeframe with property insurance, and the way property insurance works is that we are asking the Board to approve not to exceed amount because we believe between now and the time that the policy renews, which is April 1st, we believe we might be able to get that price down a little bit. And so, that's why we're coming to the Board with that. And we also have Joe Belazi here, who is the broker of record on property insurance. If you have additional questions, he would be glad to answer them.
What's the name of the... I'm sorry. What's the name of the company, you know, the broker of record?
Which one?
For...
For property? For property, it's McGriff, and they are the broker of record. And then, right now, we have not given the names of the firms that we are recommending on the property insurance because we... basically, we're such a large school district, what happens is not any one firm can insure us. So, you will have at least usually two firms, one that does the second level of insurance.
Thanks. I was just looking for the broker of record. I don't see that.
No, that's all good.
That's correct. Do you have any more... Would you... Do you have any questions that you would like Joe Belazi to answer?
No, that covers the questions I had. Although, one bit of explanation. What is the composition on the committee? I don't have to know the specific people, but...
On the insurance, it was Stewart Snow, myself, Melissa McIner, who is the Director of Business Services, and then also the insurance benefits manager that was on the committee that looked at that. And the same thing on the life insurance, the same people.
Thank you.
Isn't this pretty much the procedure you always follow?
Yes, that is correct. Now, look, we did it a little differently with the property insurance this time, is we did actually use a broker of record. In the past, we've gone out and just done the property insurance, and what happens is they kind of split up the markets, and that limits those people proposing. And this way, by going out with a broker of record, we were able to maybe touch more of the market than we would have otherwise, and hopefully get a better price or a better deal for the school district. And what we're anticipating is that will go up a little bit, but it's all based on our increase in our property, or what we call our cost to replace our buildings. And recently, in our... when we've been doing the construction, that cost per square foot has been going up. And that is why... the only reason we have an increase.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. The Board will consider approving construction proposals and contracts paid from bond funds to the recommended contractors and authorize the superintendent or designate to execute all necessary documents related to such contracts as follows. Number one, Package A, 2012 miscellaneous renovations to Wilson Elementary School. Number two, Package C, 2012 additions and renovations to Watkins and Thornton Middle School. Three, Package E, 2012 renovations to Millsap School. Four, Package I, 2012 renovations to Winfern High School, Winfern Annex and Early Childhood Center. And five, Package K, 2012 miscellaneous renovations to Jaeger Elementary School. Any Board members have any questions? There is no presentation. Yeah, Mr. Jackson?
And my question has... Well, I can go ahead and ask both of them here. First, it appears that all the contracts that were awarded were awarded to contractors who had the highest score based upon the scoring of the published criteria, but also had the lowest bid amount. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Secondly, we're replacing chillers as well as some air conditioning equipment at Millsap Elementary School, and this is similar to what we did last year, so my question is identical to that which I asked last year. Will the replacement include energy-efficient units? If so, what is their rating? How does that rating compare to what's available out there? Are these... For this type of equipment, is multiple speeds relevant?
Yes, that equipment is the high-efficiency energy equipment that we specify. The particular equipment that we established for this project has a rating of .662 kilowatts per tonne, which equates to an 18 rating in EER. So, we're very pleased with the specifications that we use to make sure we get the most energy efficiency out of our equipment that's specified. In terms of the motors, these chillers are actually partial loading machines. They're actually a screw-rotting machine, and they can actually isolate based on the loading conditions that are present at the building.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yes.
It's more of a comment. I noticed throughout all the schools that there was an increase in security and items and procedures for security, and I really appreciate that, and I know all of our parents do. And I do believe that our teachers and our children will really appreciate dry erase boards instead of chalk boards, too.
Absolutely.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Dr. Ogletree?
The... These renovations are coming out of the 2007 bond program?
Yes, sir.
Do we keep... Do we know what is left, or how... Where do we stand with the renovations to all of our older schools and what needs to be done, and how much funds do we have left?
This is the last year of all the renovation work that we have left in the '07 authorization. We're doing a total of about $32 million left, the renovation work, of which these five packages consist of that $32 million. And we'll be coming back to the Board in April and probably May with some additional contract awards to represent the remaining renovation work. Anyone else? Kevin. Mr. Hopman?
Just a newbie question. What's your delivery method? Is it program management or contract management at risk?
We're using the competitive seal proposal methodology.
Okay, okay. So, the architects associated with it are... will be overseeing the process throughout construction, right?
That's correct, as well as my staff as well. We have assigned project managers that oversee the day-to-day operations of each of our projects, as well as the construction administration services by our architects are in their agreement with the district.
Okay.
Overseen as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Roy, just for information only, if I remember correctly... And there is no frog up here. It's strictly me. How many projects were you working on this summer in our school district? Quite a few. I don't have the exact number, but it was probably over 30-some-odd projects of renovations, as well as we have building modification projects that we do that are sometimes funded by campuses or mud districts, and it ranges from summer to summer. But on average, we probably manage 30 to 40 projects in a summer, and then that's just strictly contracts that are awarded for that summer. When you look at warranty from previous year's projects, we're overseeing the warranty program as well, so any outstanding warranty items, we're also working on those items to make sure they're completed during the summer as well. Thanks, Roy. Appreciate it. Anyone else?
House, please.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
C, the Board will consider authorizing the superintendent or designate to enter into the miscellaneous professional service contracts related to the following projects. Package A, 2012 Wilson Elementary School miscellaneous renovation, HVAC testing and balance services, up to $75,000. Package E, 2012 Millsap Elementary School miscellaneous renovations, HVAC testing and balance services, up to $75,000. Package K, 2012 Jaeger Elementary School miscellaneous renovations, HVAC testing and balance services, up to $75,000. Do we have any questions? There's no presentation. We're okay? Moving along to D. The Board will consider approving the external auditors, Hereford Lynch Sellers and Kirkham PC, to perform the annual audit of the district's financial statements for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2013. There's no presentation. Do we have any questions? Mr. Jackson?
And this is not really a question, but a comment. Just wanted to say thank you to management. Y'all went out and issued an RFP for audit services, and this was, in fact, responsive to my questions of last year. So, I appreciate that management is responsive to the Board, and I agree that we needed to go out and take another look and request an RFP. So, I just wanted to, one, acknowledge it, and two, to say thanks.
Anyone else? Thank you. The Board will consider approving the tax refunds of $500 or greater for Cypress Fairbanks ISD. No presentation. Do we have any questions? Mr. Jackson?
Karen.
And I'm not really doing this merely to see you pop up and down. We do not mention typically individual taxpayers by name, so I'm going to refer you to page number. Page 143 of the Board Book near the bottom of the page. We have one taxpayer, same address, refund amounts are identical amounts. Did we have a double payment here, or is there a different explanation?
Yeah, there's a different explanation. Basically, what happened is this particular taxpayer recently bought some property in October of 2012, and the taxpayer had to pay the delinquent taxes for 2011 and 2012. The GMAC, who was all... the mortgage company, also paid it. And so, it was paid by two different individuals, the same amount of money, and this particular individual that got the refund, what occurred was they split up with three checks, the 2011 payments, and two of those checks were that same amount of $1,780 and a penny. So, we had... That's why you saw the two refunds exactly the same.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions? The Board will consider approving the minutes of the February 11th, 2013 regular meeting. No presentations. Do we have any questions or corrections? Anyone? All right. Moving along to the non-consent action items. 6A, the Board will consider approving the administration's recommendation for the 2013-2014 open slash closed campus designations for student transfers. We have a brief presentation by Teresa Hall and Marty Edwards, and Blanca is going to help out too, right?
I'm going to turn it over to Marty for the explanation, but I do want to draw the Board's attention that we did make some changes in the way we made the determination of whether or not a campus would be open or closed. So, I definitely wanted to provide the opportunity for Mr. Edwards to share this new formula, which I think was a brilliant idea. It makes perfect sense, and it's based on the percentage of capacity that's remaining on a campus in order to determine first if it's open, and then if so, the number of student transfers that they would be approved or eligible for. In addition, in looking at this formula, we also were able to develop a formula that we feel we're going to... we would like to recommend that we apply in closing campuses to employee transfers as well. This will be the first time that we've come to the Board with a recommendation to close a campus to employee transfer. So, I just want to make that clear as Mr. Edwards is giving his presentation. In doing that, though, students who are currently on a transfer at that campus would be able to remain. They would be closed to new employee transfer requests, but if an employee is assigned to that campus, they would be eligible to still send their child to that campus, or if they're in within a certain distance, which Mr. Edwards is going to explain to you. But it was important for me to just point that out as he's going through this because this is different, and so I just want you to be armed with that information if you have additional questions for him.
Okay. Good evening. As Teresa said, we're going to be recommending tonight the open and closed campuses for the 2013-14 school year. We are recommending that the Board declare one high school, four middle schools, and 11 elementary schools open for transfers for the 2013-14 school year. Our goal is to provide as many options as possible within the constraints of capacities to accommodate students and parent preference. We took into consideration campus capacities, enrollment projections, future growth, and staffing efficiencies. The school capacity without portables is our planning capacity at each campus. Capacities at different campuses are based on different designs and different numbers of classrooms. Portable building allocations will be determined after staffing allocations are made. After you take action on this agenda item, information about open campuses for student transfers will be publicized. Transfers will be accepted between April 1st and June 3rd, 2013. June 1st is a Saturday, so we extend that to the 3rd of June. The reason we cannot keep transfers open all year is because it would impact staffing. The open and closed campus designation and the number of eligible transfers is determined by the following formula. A school is considered open if its building capacity without portables is less than 90%. If the capacity is less than 90... If the campus is less than 90% of capacity, the eligible number of student transfers is the number of students it would take to get to the 90% capacity level. A school is considered closed if its building capacity without portables is more than 90%. However, any district's employee's child may transfer to a closed campus until the campus enrollment reaches a certain level. Once a high school reaches 105% of building capacity, a middle school reaches 110% of building capacity, and an elementary school reaches 115% of building capacity, they are considered closed to all district staff except campus personnel or any employees whose home campus or work site is within one mile of the campus. Following this formula, we are recommending closing 42 elementary campuses and opening 11 elementary campuses for the 2013-14 school year. We are also recommending closing 14 elementary campuses to district staff unless they work at the campus or their home campus work site is within one mile of the campus. We are recommending closing 13 middle schools and opening four middle schools for transfers. We recommend closing one middle school to district staff unless they work at the campus or their home campus or work site is within one mile of the campus. We recommend closing nine high schools and opening one high school for transfers. We also recommend closing two high schools to district staff unless they work at the campus or their home campus or work site is within one mile of the campus. Compared to last year's open and closed campus list in 2012-13, we had 18 schools designated as open. For the 2013-14 school year, we are recommending 16 campuses to be declared open for transfers. The chart that Blanca is putting on the screen now would be the open and closed recommendation for the 13 and 14 school year. If you look across the chart, we start with the high schools at the top, the school, list the high schools, capacity without portables. The next column is projected total enrollment, and then the over or under, and that is over and under of the projected enrollment, either a negative or a positive. The next column is if it's affected by a boundary change, which really is only warmer for this school year. And then recommended transfer status for 2012-13 shows last year's recommended status. The next column shows this year's recommended status for the 2013 and 14 school year. And then the last column is the recommended number of transfers available. And again, the way you get that number is if they're under the 90%, how many students would it take to get to that 90% level of capacity? So, when you look at the chart, there is one high school that we recommend open for transfers for the 2013-14 school year, and that is Cypress Springs High School. They have a capacity of 3,219. Their projected enrollment is 2,780. That would be the only high school that is under the 90%. In middle schools, if you look down, it's following the same chart. The open campuses we are recommending are Campbell with 112 slots, Goodson with 154, Spillane with 13, and Thornton with 100. Spillane with 13, and Thornton with 102. And again, if you look, the shaded area shows last year's recommendation compared to this year's recommendation. If you go to the chart with elementary schools, again, the chart is exactly the same, except listing elementary instead of secondary schools. The schools that are recommended for transfers are Gleason, Hamilton Elementary, Hemingway, Keith, Kirk, Lee, Millsap, Pope, M. Robinson, A. Robson, Sheridan. Earlier, you were passed out some information, I think in your packet that you got earlier before the meeting started last week. There was one school that we had previously designated as open. However, in our elementary meetings, the decision was made to place a pre-K in that school that did not previously have a pre-K program. And so by placing that into that school, it increased the enrollment to take them off of that open list. And if you will look at, back on the charts, the schools that have asterisks beside them, we can start back at the high school level. There are schools that have asterisks beside them on your chart. Those would be campuses that would be closed to district staff unless that person works at that campus or their work site is within one mile of that campus. And those high schools would be Cypress Falls High School and Cypress Lakes High School. You can see the projected enrollment for Cypress Falls High School was 3,600 students. Their capacity is 3,276. So they're well over their projected enrollment capacity. The middle schools, if you look down at the bottom, there's one middle school that we're recommending close to employees, except those employees who work at Smith or within one mile of Smith. And of course, that middle school would be Smith Middle School. If you look over at the chart with elementary schools, again, we're recommending schools be closed, and they're 115% above capacity or more. And those would be Andre, Francone, Andre, Burks, Francone, Frazier, Hancock, Holbrook, Joel, Matsky, McPhee, Owens, and Tips, Wilson, and Jaeger. So that is our recommendation. We'll accept any questions that you have.
Thanks, Mr. Edwards. Board members, anyone? Yes, Ms. Hartley?
Two things. First was, you've laid this out beautifully and explained it very well. I want to make sure that our employees, that this is shared as well, and that everybody's really familiar with
Sure.
the workings behind the thought process. Because it will change some people's day-to-day operations, and so it's really important that we take care of them. My other thing was, just will you remind me of those students who will be grandfathered in?
Yes. Any student who is currently on a transfer can remain at that campus until they graduate or move on to the next, if they're in elementary school, move on to middle school, or middle school, move on to high school. So if they are already, if they're a transfer student and they're already on that campus, they may remain on that campus until they move.
And those numbers are actually included in the projected enrollment. If they're currently students on a campus on a transfer, they are actually calculated into that projected.
So even if it's closed, those parents can still, they can still attend that school? I just want to make sure those parents understand.
If they are currently attending that school, they may continue to attend that school.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
The one exception to that, we probably need to add to that, is the siblings. Siblings would not be able to go on a transfer if it's not their home campus and it's a closed campus. They would not be able to also attend because they have a sibling there.
And that's another thing of, like, I wanted the staff to be aware of this situation. We just want to make sure that we communicate that strongly enough to when parents are choosing a transfer, that that won't be the case for the younger sibling maybe.
Right.
And that might affect their decision.
And I think that Dave can address that too, if he wants to, but I can address it for him. That's one thing that we always stress very heavily with the parents when they're choosing to go to a campus that's not their home campus, that yes, we have openings right now. That does not guarantee that when your sibling who comes along one to five years later is also going to have a spot in that. And it's actually on the form that they sign. So they're well aware of that. Of course, some people aren't happy with that, but...
I understand. I mean, I understand being frustrated, but this is the policy, and I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Hartley. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Jackson's got something.
Teresa had mentioned that there was a change in the approach. What was the change, and what is the reason for the change?
We went to a percentage instead of a set number. Before we had the policy, I don't know if you have a copy of that, but I think we do. What we used to do was, an elementary school was 125.
Elementary and middle school.
Right. Elementary and middle school was 125 below their projected enrollment, and they were considered open. High schools were 200. That change came about because there's some big discrepancies in the amount of students that a building can hold. If you look at the, a good example is, look at your elementary chart. And when you look at it, look down, say, at a, let's see, I'm trying to find a low one here. Say a Gleason or a Hamilton Elementary or a Holmesley. We even have some in the 800. They're not jumping at me right now. We have, Matsky has a capacity of 818 students compared to Andre, who has a capacity of 1,092 students. So that 100 is a lot, has a lot bigger impact on a Matsky than it does an Andre. When you start looking at the numbers of students that it would take to affect a school... I made some notes here. I want to exactly answer that question. Let me see if I can find it. On the elementary school, the lowest one, it's going to range, to determine to be closed, is going to be somewhere between 82 and 109 students. So instead of just saying a base 100, because some of those campuses are much smaller campuses capacity-wise, we went with the 10%, the 90% capacity. So it changed that number from 82 to 109 instead of just 100.
With respect to the employees and the change of policy there, do we have an idea how many employees that might impact?
I'd have to direct that to Mr. Franf. He might know. I'm not sure of that.
I don't know that we can really determine that. Again, I think our goal is to always accommodate requests, especially in close proximity to the campus in which they're assigned. And we definitely took that into consideration. For instance, our multi-campus sites, and Smith being a closed campus for next year. But if a teacher is assigned to Warner and has a middle school student, it wouldn't be reasonable for us to say the student is not able to attend Smith. But what we have happen is, just because there's a personal preference for a campus, some employees will have their children, maybe I work on the other side of the district, but I would like for my child to attend Smith. Well, we just had to put some parameters in place for those campuses that far exceed their projected enrollment and capacity. And we know that Smith is even going to continue to grow. So as far as being able to predict how many employees that will impact, I think that's difficult to project. I think the majority of the employees, would you say, Deborah, the majority are within that one-mile radius, or they are assigned to the campus where they're sending their children? So I know I'm not giving you a great answer, but it's the best answer I have.
And Teresa, that's correct. And also, considering that all of those transfers would be new transfer requests, so it's difficult to determine how many employees would request the transfer because they're not existing transfers. Those students who are currently at the campuses, they can apply to have that transfer renewed. So we won't be denying any current transfers unless there's an attendance or a discipline issue.
And one thing I wanted to point out, too, is if you look at the chart that Blanca has put up right now, when you look at the percentage over 100% before we close a campus, of course, we said it's 115% for elementary. But when you look at the campuses that are colored in red, they're much more than 115%, most of them. Andre is at 130% of capacity, Burks 124%, Francone 128%, Frazier 135%, Hancock 127%, Holbrook 127%, and you can go down the list. Wilson 134. So you can see why we have so many portable buildings at a lot of our campuses, because they are heavily populated above their capacity.
Dr. Ogletree?
I think my concern, too, is along with what Christine has stated, as it relates to the employees. If you don't have a number right now on how many employees have requested transfers, I'm trying to figure out why. Is this an anticipated problem? Or has it always been an issue with our employees and transfers for their children?
Well, we can probably easily, definitely by Thursday, give you an exact number of employees that have requested transfers for their children. But what we would be difficult to give you is whether or not where that employee is assigned. We'd have to take each employee transfer on X campus and determine where the parent is assigned to determine, is that just based on a personal preference that I want that child to go to that school, or do I work in close proximity to that campus or at that campus? Because employees are going to be eligible to still transfer their students to campuses. It's just that those that are far exceed the capacity of the building, only those that work within that one-mile radius or on that campus will not be able to go there. Does that make sense? Burks is a perfect example, Mr. Ogletree. Burks receives a large number of employee transfer requests, student transfer requests. Now, the number of actual students that are assigned there, that their parents may work, say, on the other side of the district, I can't give you that exact number. But I do know that in looking at the capacity for Burks, it was something that Ms. Brosnahan pointed out, that she has enough kindergartners currently that could make up a whole classroom, employee transfer requests that can make up a whole classroom of students in just kindergarten.
And in addition to this, not even looking at employees and how this impacts employees, is the new formula, is it expected to reduce students and portables?
That's a good question. I think in some of the overcrowded schools that we have that are in excess, like the Burks and the Tips and the Andre's, that have very high enrollments beyond their capacities, we're hoping that we're going to, by stopping the district transfers into some of those campuses, we're able to keep their enrollment levels at a pace, of course, a growing area is always going to grow. But if you can keep it at a pace where you're not increasing beyond the capacity of even putting portables on that campus, because if you're driven by Burks as an example, there's not a whole lot of room left to put portables on Burks' campus. But are we going to do away with portable buildings by doing that? I think the answer to that is probably no. We're not going to do away with portable buildings. Are we going to, by reducing it, it's possible that a campus might have one less portable if we put that limitation on there with district employees? But again, it only gets to a point when it's above that threshold that we've put with the elementary schools at 115, middle's at 110, and high schools with 105.
Dr. Ogletree, I want to point out that this was really, it was, what, three years ago, Ms. Stewart, that we made a change in the transfer policy for employees that allowed employees to select any campus in the district. Prior to that, we did have the practice of within the one-mile radius for employee transfer requests. And we certainly want to honor that. It's just that we find ourselves with several campuses, Burks, Smith Elementary, well, Warner currently, where they far exceed their capacity, and they also have a large number of employee transfer requests. So it's just trying to control that a little bit for them, but still allow the opportunity for our employees to have access to other open campuses. And certainly, if you work within that one-mile radius, we know that that would still be available for them.
And I understand, but my reply to that would have been, Teresa, then, like with Burks, we just closed Burks. Right now, we're shutting down the whole district. Instead of just saying these schools that we have a high percentage of transfers into our employee transfers, and we, you know, closed those schools, but now we're saying we're going to just do the whole district.
No, that is what we're saying. Only those campuses are closed.
Except for the one mile. I understand you still have the one mile.
We're not closing all campuses.
We're talking about 13 elementary campuses that we would close to district staff unless they work at that building out of the 43.
Okay.
All right.
Because the campuses that...
It's only those ones that are above the 115% capacity, and there's 13 of those campuses.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Jackson?
When we talk about capacity, and this is similar to the question that I've asked over the past, I guess, four months' worth of board meetings, when we talk about capacity, is this original design capacity or the revised design capacity that was adopted two years ago, I think?
It's the revised capacities.
And if I remember correctly, on the revised design, on the revised capacities in all cases, we revised the capacity of these schools upwards.
That's correct.
And it seemed to me that there were some fairly significant upward revisions.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Marty. Appreciate it. Action Item 6B. The Board will consider approving on first reading additions, deletions, or revision to district policies. GKD, local community relations, non-school use of school facilities, revise. There is no, oh, there is a presentation. Excuse me. Teresa?
Actually, I'm going to have Mr. Edwards come back up and
Marty.
share with you the change that we are recommending to this policy. I think you'll recall that there have been a couple of times that we've come to the Board and have asked for an extension of an outside group, such as a church, for an extended use of our campuses. Our current policy allowed for three years, and then if additional year was to be granted, they had to move to another location, and it was only for one additional year. Well, we've had several churches that have come forward and have needed a little bit of additional time. We've come to you even last month and have asked for your approval to extend that use of the facility. What we are recommending now is that in order to help accommodate and assist with those requests, after the fourth year, that we just change, increase the use, the cost, and that then it's not a limit on just one additional year. And the increase would be intended to cover the maintenance for that extended use, consistent use of that facility. That would be the purpose for the increase. And that was our purpose in saying that after the third year, if they needed an And that was our purpose in saying that after the third year, if they needed an additional year, they had to go to a new location so that we didn't have that weekly consistent use of that facility. So, Mr. Edwards, do you have anything you want to add to that?
That basically covers what the request that we're doing. There's some minor changes that are also in there. We made some title changes. Our facilities use and records manager is now called facilities use manager. We split that position up. We removed, like Teresa said, we were asking to remove that, the clause in there that talks about three years and then moving to a fourth year only and with no exceptions. And the reason for that is like what Teresa had mentioned. We do have some churches in our community that are using our facilities, who have gone beyond that, even the fourth year. And so this will allow us to work with them on an individual basis to go kind of a month by month and see how long they're, how they're going forward in moving to their new facility. It also has a section in it that talks about requiring, the district, not requiring, it allows the district to require a supervisor or extra custodians to youth groups who are using our facilities free of charge up until 8:30, and that's non-athletic facilities. Because some of these groups, they come in and use our facilities, most of the time they're very small, eight, 10, 15 kids. But sometimes the events are very large, and there might be 200 people at an event. And under board policy, it says, we do not provide a supervisor or custodian for that event. And so this would allow us to look at the size of the event and put a supervisor into that facility with, add a custodian also, if we see that that was necessary for the size of the event. And those are the basic changes.
We have any questions from board members? Dr. Ogletree?
Just want to say, I think this is a good idea, and appreciate you all's work on that with our district, trying to really work with the different churches and other groups. So to make it plain, three years, and then if they want to stay beyond three years, what they will expect is an increase in their building usage fee.
Correct.
Okay. Who will determine that? Has that already been determined, what the building usage fee increase will be?
Yes. We've already determined that amount. And actually, I was, thought there might be some questions, so I did a little research on local, local school districts that, what they charge.
Basically, for the outside groups, the ones that have that consistent use, I think it doubles, Dr. Ogletree. But what Mr. Edwards will show you is that that's still a great rate and still lower than the majority of the surrounding school districts are charging outside groups.
And what I did was, I pulled up the websites of the surrounding school districts and calculated what the cost would be if you were a church group who was using a facility, an elementary facility for a four-hour church service on a Sunday. And if you look at the prices that are charged, these are the published prices on the sites, websites. Ours is the lowest of any in the area. We charge $75 an hour for an elementary school cafeteria. And so we maintain to keep that rate at the lowest rate in the area, at $75 an hour. If you look at the chart, you can go up the list. Tom Ball is $85 an hour. Katie is $100 an hour. Klein is 108. Conroe is 118. Fort Bend, 122. And then slotted in there would be the after the three years, would go to $150 an hour in Cyfair. And then Spring, and I wish Stewart was here because I could rub Stewart on this one, Spring is $168 an hour, and that's your first Sunday of use. And I've talked with Stewart about that before, and I believe he actually set that rate. But those, those are the rates of the area school districts for use of our cafeterias.
And Dr. O, what I would add is, you all may remember, when we, when we put the three years in place, it's because we were actually seeing some increased maintenance and upkeep fees when we had repeated users. And while, while it may be a church or a faith-based organization, it's not always a church or a faith-based youth organization that has that repeated use. But when we were seeing that, we were kind of looking at, kind of at the three-year mark with not being able to get in there and strip those floors and do things, we were, we were seeing some, you know, some need for some maintenance. So that's why we looked at moving after three years. But then we came to realize, in working with our community members who were using it, that that maybe wasn't the best practice for them. So then we said, okay, well, how can we meet our needs and be good stewards of the funds and take care of our facilities, but also be a good community partner for these groups that really may just need a little bit more time? And they don't want to have to, I don't like moving. They don't want to pick up all their stuff and go. And so we looked at, okay, if it's going to cost us a little more kind of at that point, then we probably should pass that on. So that was sort of what we looked at, you know, may have to do, you know, a little more maintenance or a little more cleaning if they stay in that fourth year. And so that's kind of how we balanced that.
And with all our facilities use fees, you know, we changed those fees, I believe it was four years ago. We tried to keep our fees at a cost. This is not a money-making deal for the school district facilities use, but we do want to recoup the costs that we have. Are we recouping our cost at $75 an hour? I hope so. But, you know, you've always got that extra maintenance when you're continuing to turn on the lights, you're continuing to turn on the air conditioning that would not be running on those Sundays. So we want to, we want to provide to the community, but we do want to recoup our, at least our cost.
Any other questions for Marty? Okay, thanks, Marty. I would like to move 6A and 6B to consent. Do we have any problems with that? Anybody? Okay. Donna, we'll move that to consent. Thank you. Item 6C has been removed from the agenda. The superintendent's briefing portion of the agenda will be presented on Thursday evening, and therefore, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming. Sad? Y'all want to stay a little longer?
Yeah.
[music]